Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, November 6, 2024, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Jeremy Grimm, presiding. Also present are Council President Deb Rule, Counselors Joe Espiro, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Counselor Rick Howarth is absent. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility, as the Presiding Officer, I'm to identify law enforcement personnel serving as Sergeant of Arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we are pleased to have Chief Corey Kuhn in the rear of the room. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, under announcements, I proclaim Nurse Practitioners Week in Sandpoint. I believe we, I know we have several nurse practitioners in the audience tonight to accept the proclamation, which I will now read aloud, including my beautiful wife. Whereas nurse practitioners have served a critical role as a trusted healthcare provider for decades, and whereas nurse practitioners work to expand healthcare access in communities across our state, promote health equality in care, and improve health outcomes for all; whereas patients depend on the more than 385,000 licensed NPs in the United States to diagnose, manage, and treat their chronic and acute healthcare conditions; whereas NPs provide high-quality, primary, acute, and specialty healthcare services while emphasizing health promotion, disease prevention, health education, and counseling, partnering with patients to improve their health; whereas the confidence that patients have in NP-delivered healthcare is evidenced by the more than 1 billion visits made annually to NPs across the country; and whereas more than five decades of research demonstrates the high quality of care provided by NPs; whereas better utilization of NPs through monetized state laws and improved policies creates better health through a more accessible, efficient, cost-effective, and higher-quality healthcare system; and whereas more than half the nation, including 27 states, the District of Columbia, Guam, and the Northern Marsha Marina Islands, have adopted full-practice-authority legislation, offering patients full and direct access to the outstanding care provided by NPs; and whereas leading governmental and policy entities, including the National Academy of Medicine, the National Council of State Boards of Nursing, National Governors' Association, and Federal Trade Commission, have taken notice of the benefits of providing patients full and direct access to NP-delivered care; and whereas NPs serve as provider of choice for many Idahoans and play a pivotal role in the health and welfare of our communities; and whereas Sandpoint is proud to recognize and honor the service of NPs in our community, now therefore be it resolved that I, Jeremy Grimm, Mayor of Sandpoint, hereby declare November 10 through 16, 2024, as Nurse Practitioner Week in Sandpoint, in recognition of the countless contributions nurse practitioners have made over the past half-century and will continue to make on behalf of the health and well-being of our citizens, proclaim this sixth day of November 2024 in the city of Sandpoint, Idaho, Bonnar County. If Cynthia and anyone else, any other NPs would like to get a picture or at least accept this? Next, onto announcements, the city is currently seeking applicants for a couple of our commissions, the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as our Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission. A volunteer citizen advisory board member serves a three-year term. The Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission is an active board that meets monthly to advise and assist the mayor and city council, and work in coordination of city staff to develop, coordinate, and promote visual, performing, and literary arts and heritage programs and policies for the enjoyment, education, cultural enrichment, and benefit of our citizens. City residents are encouraged to apply, but applicants outside the city limits will also be considered based on requirements of city code. Our Planning and Zoning Commission serves a vital role for the city, reviewing and making decisions or recommendations to city council on land use-related applications. The Planning and Zoning Commissioners also serve on the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee, which meets as needed. Some past Planning and Zoning Commissioners have gone on to serve on city council and as mayor, so it is an excellent stepping stone opportunity for those who may be considering a run for political office in Sandpoint, or for anyone who may have land use-related experience or expertise that they would like to share, or for someone who is simply civic-minded and interested in taking on this role and serving the community. We are seeking city of Sandpoint residents, although we will consider appointment of one member who may not live in the city limits but resides within the city's area of impact in Bonnar County. The Planning and Zoning Commission typically meets twice a month. We also continue to seek applicants interested in serving on our American with Disabilities Act Advisory Committee who live in Sandpoint city limits. With at least one more eligible in-town applicant, we are very close to being able to make appointments and convene this committee. To apply to serve on any of these boards, please visit the city website at www.sandpointidaho.gov, and under our city at the top, click Citizen Advisory Boards. You will find a link to the applications on that page. It's available by visiting the news postings from the homepage as well. Council members, just ask if you know of or think you have a friend or a neighbor who might be interested, just would encourage you to encourage them to give it some consideration. Couple more updates from me before I go over to council. Just reminder, we've got the citywide leaf pickup November 11 through 15. The wind and weather have cooperated, and we're getting all those leaves off the trees. We are preparing for snow plowing in our December 1 One-Side Street Parking Enforcement. Signs are starting to go up around town, so just if you meet someone or the public, please be aware, that goes into effect December 1. Council members, I am looking for a designee to represent us on the SPOT Joint Powers Agreement and SPOT Board. It's a monthly meeting. I don't think it's a huge time commitment. I recognize you're all busy, but if anyone this evening, I'd love to get someone who is familiar with the city budget and wants to serve in that role. Just a couple things. Funding, we were not awarded the grant for the pump track that we discussed a few, I guess, a month or so ago. We also did not receive an award for the first of our two Great Northern Federal Railroad Crossing Elimination Grants out there on Woodland and Great Northern. We still have one more that we expect to hear from sometime in January, probably late January. A couple updates, you know, hats off to Holly and the Capitol Improvement Team for pulling off all the great projects with minimal of any change orders for Boyer, Pine, and Fourth. I think you've seen some of the repaving and other work around town, so great job, staff, and just excellent, excellent work. Fifth and Pine, we do have a letter going out to the trucking community. We're implementing a soft enforcement. We have reader boards ordered. They will be here shortly, both at the I-95 exit if you're going north, and on Pine Street, there was some delay in getting those, you know, priced and ordered. We've tried to do that as fast as possible. Traffic is flowing. Police have made some enforcement, and we will proceed with, you know, warnings and education. You'll notice that there are some cones up for the left, no-left turn on Euclid if you're heading west on Highway 2. It's going to take some time for the public to learn the new route, which is really the old route to some degree. Anyways, that is proceeding. Holiday decorations, we are out shopping for our Christmas tree. Austin in the Parks Department is out looking for a tree that will go up after Thanksgiving down at Jeff Jones Square. The Development Impact Fee Study is progressing. We had a call today with Tishar Bice going over some of the demographic and growth projections. They will be coming to you in the next month or so to give an update and get some direction on some of the areas where the council can have some input on the methodology that they're using. On the staffing front, it is just a pleasure to have a fully-staffed administrative office. We've got all the positions downstairs filled. Tomorrow, we have a interview with a Public Works candidate who looks qualified, very qualified, and staff is just blending, meshing, working really well together. There's a lot of consistent, coordinated, you know, cohesion, building, planning, invoicing, all that, so things feel like they're running really, really smoothly at City Hall. As you're all aware, the local option tax did not reach the 60% threshold. In the coming weeks, I look forward to discussing with the council what your preference is. I'm thinking we do some, maybe a survey, try to understand, get some feedback from the community, what we need to change, or if we want to reconsider that. Is it the duration? Is it the projects? But basically, I'd like to learn why and why not. I'm going to get some of the precinct-level data to try to, you know, even hone in further on which precincts were supportive or not supportive of that local option tax. And finally, on November 20, there will be a special city council meeting prior to the regular city council meeting where our engineer Keller will go over the progress on the preliminary engineering report on the wastewater treatment plant. I think that is most of the updates that I found in the front of my mind. With that, I would turn it over to council. Do council members have any additional announcements or reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, thank you very much. The pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee met again on October 10. Kate Huesman called the meeting to order. Members, President Kate Huesman, Erin Billings, Evan Lewis, Jennifer Heller, Molly O'Reilly, Radley Peterson, Taylor Prather, Reed Weber, and I believe I was there, but I'm not on the list. Okay. And Julie Perchinsky was absent. We talked about Walkability Summit Report. Molly gave us an update on that, and the committee members who attended reported on the Walkability Summit Tuesday, October 1, in a number of locations around Sandpoint, included as a workshop of the Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation Community Health Academy, in which Mayor Grimm and staff are participating. Committee members Weber, O'Reilly, Billings, and Perchinsky attended, along with Community Planning and Development Director Jason Welker. Following committee discussion, it was noted that this topic may be relevant for a more comprehensive review and follow-up by a future subcommittee. Review of Multimodal Transportation Master Plan: Walkability and Bikeability Goals and Objectives. Committee Member O'Reilly started discussion with a summary presentation of her review of City of Sandpoint's 2021 Multimodal Transportation Master Plan. Committee members shared their reviews and interpretations and discussed their opinions of their review of the MTMP. Following committee discussion, it was distinguished that there are areas within the transportation plan that may be more pertinent for further detailed review and/or follow-up by a future subcommittee. There was a discussion on roles of committee in supporting Planning Division and Development Review Process. Mr. Welker introduced City of Sandpoint Construction Manager Holly Ellis, who provided information regarding Sandpoint's resort city tourist lodging tax, where voters increased the tax from 7% to 14% in 2022, with some sidewalks already identified in town for repairs to be funded with this tax revenue. There was discussion on recent and upcoming construction projects in the community, and at what point during development and permitting would the role of the committee best serve as a support to the process. Item number five was discussion on role of possible subcommittees. Discussion held on the definition and role of subcommittees, and how the use of subcommittees would function. Committee members decided on a subcommittee consisting of committee members Billings, O'Reilly, and Lewis, tasked with arranging a time to meet with Ms. Ellis to discuss the current sidewalk roadwork being planned for Cedar Street. Formation of other possible subcommittees to be discussed at a later meeting. No actions were taken. Following some final questions and confirmation of email communications, the meeting adjourned at 12:57 PM. So that's what happened at the Bike Ped Committee. The last time, there will be another meeting, I believe, next Thursday. And then I had a comment that I wanted to make. I was a little bit disappointed that Pine Street actually opened before all of our pertinent signage was in place. I would like to compliment the department that I was out on my bike today, and I rode down Fourth Street, which was beautiful and exciting. It's kind of one of the common roads that I do use, and it made it much nicer on my bicycle today. But as I hit the intersection with Pine Street, I saw a full logging truck driving west on Pine, which is not a truck route. I do understand our signage isn't here, but I did bring it up at an earlier meeting that we should have everything in place. So again, I have a little bit of disappointment there. As a case in point, I remember when we were working on our Lower Basin bike trails in the watershed, and there was an absolute no opening until all of our signage was in place and checked by staff before we were allowed to ride bike trails. So hopefully in the future, we can have all our ducks in a row before we open a road and then cause more enforcement problems for our police force. Thank you.
Thank you for the very comprehensive report, Council President Rule. We will strive to always improve signage. Any other council members have reports or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have.
Councilwoman Duquette?
I have the Sustainability Committee meeting minutes. We met last October 22 here in city chambers, 12:30. We had President Wayne Benner, Christine Moon, Deborah Dickerson, Diana Duke, Mary Wilkos, and absent was Katrina Piale. They read the minutes, and they were approved from the previous meeting. The bulk of the discussion on this committee meeting was to adopt the definition of sustainability, because we had talked previously about the definition we put in the comp plan. They discussed the definition of sustainability, as noted and provided by a variety of sources. They all brought something that they wanted to put in it, and ultimately, it took quite a bit of discussion. They agreed to adopt the following definition for the purpose of their work and focus, and it's pretty much what we have with some addition. So they have sustainability, meeting the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. However, they wanted sustainability has three dimensions: environmental, economic, and social. So like I said, they had a whole lot of input, but to narrow it down to make it shorter, we just added, they added the environmental, economic, and social part. Motion was made and passed. Then they discussed their main focus, vision, goals, and objectives. Following a discussion, the committee agreed that the committee should, in general, support the city in incorporating sustainability into consideration of planning and operations, with an agreement to include this topic on the next meeting agenda for further discussion. Creation of a short sustainability checklist, they would like to come up with, that could be used in that regard, and to take action to come to a final consensus and vote on those components. Let's see. Members were also encouraged to return to the next meeting, each with a list of their own individual vision for goals that the committee could endeavor to meet. They did have a brief discussion on the Sandpoint Forward Project that I had shared earlier. They had a little confusion. They thought it was a grant opportunity for the committee, but it is not. General announcements and comments from the committee and staff were at the roundtable, including a reminder for each committee member to provide to staff an email address that will be used specifically for committee city business and clarification on the legalities per Idaho Open Meeting Law of email conversation amongst the quorum of the committee. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 26 at 12:30, and it was adjourned at 2. And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I also have a comment on truck traffic. You brought it up, and then President Rule also commented on it. On the, I've had people complain about or ask questions about log trucks going down Boyer. With the new signage and the new Pine Street two ways, I am wondering, and my neighbors on Pine Street who questioned this, was wondering if there will be a way to route the logging trucks coming from the west to not use Boyer but to use Fifth. And I'm not sure how that comes about or who you ask. I was kind of hoping Holly was going to be here so I could mention that, because going down Boyer, there's, it's same thing with on Pine Street, the, you know, the residences, and it gets pretty crazy with the traffic down there. So that was just one comment. And then on the updated truck routes on the multimodal transportation plan, and I have commented on this before, on page 77, I'm just going to quote read, it says, "Pine Street between Boyer Avenue and Division Avenue was removed from the designated truck routes due to the high amount of residential areas and pedestrian route. Highway 2 serves as an alternative route for Pine Street." Proposed solutions, on page 78, said, "Short-term: Implement signing and other actions to identify the updated designated truck route shown in the map on Appendix A." So a while ago, I had requested the green signs taken down off of Division and Boyer on the Route Pine, because it was taken off of the plan, and then no signs had been put up that now share red. And I was told at the time that since the signposts were still there, that these signs would be put up. And after reading this, another person had contacted me about that with the trucks going down Pine Street. It says here that we would implement sign and other actions, and that has passed time, I think, also. So I would just like to see if that could be handled.
Thank you, Councilwoman Duquette. I will get answers to your question on the Boyer, use of Boyer.
It's Boyer and Division.
Yep.
Especially now that.
Using Fifth Ave.
Oh, yes.
Instead of Boyer.
Instead of Boyer, the logging trucks in particular.
Yep, fine, and.
And then, yeah, the signs, especially now that Pine Street is two ways, there may be more issue of trucks wanting to continue through there.
Yep. Again, you will be seeing those big reader boards on Pine and US-95 saying, no truck route, but.
Right.
I will.
And like I said, a lot of that comes from the west.
Any other council announcements or reports?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
The Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission had a special meeting on October 23 at 8:30 AM here. I was unable to make it, but I was able to catch up on the YouTube replay, which is a wonderful resource. If you don't already have it, please subscribe to the YouTube, City of Sandpoint YouTube. There was a quick presentation of the scoring of public art by Procurement Officer Amber Williams, which she outlined the RFP scoring process, the criteria for selecting our upcoming public art for the fall phase of the Silver Box Art on Loan Program. We had three wonderful artists that submitted applications. The selection and recommendation process came after that, where each three of them were followed. Dave Gonzo, Anna Lee Harris, and Denny Henson were three of our artists. All of them were scored, and a recommendation was made, and they selected which boxes those different art pieces would go. And we'll actually be hearing about it tonight in new business under our proposed resolution, so I won't steal Heather's thunder from there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dick. Any other council announcements or reports? And before we move on, just you will notice we have a new configuration we're trying out, just to make the room a little more functional for staff. So I believe that'll work well for everyone. Okay. Next, as requested by Councilwoman Duquette, we will have a brief presentation from Waste Management on recycling.
Question, do I, if I want to share a video, do I, my volume need to be up to do that? If it's part of what you're sharing from your screen, you should be able to do so. Yep, just do share screen and zoom.
Yes. I just, I have all my things muted, so.
Hi there. Are you from Waste Management?
I am.
You'll need to introduce yourself, I guess, or I could, if you'd like.
So I am Tammy Hager. I'm here from WM. Pam asked me to come speak on behalf of WM on recycling. I also have Tammy Jaeger here. I do education outreach, and Tammy does more of like contractual management, public sector stuff. So I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come see your beautiful space here. It looks really, really good. So the agenda, I'm just going to talk about recycling, how items are sorted, where they go. I did bring some examples of tricky items, so we can kind of do a Q and A in that after. So why recycling matters, I'm sure, this, so these are just reminders, conserves natural resources, saves energy, saves water, reduces pollution, and it creates nine times more jobs than landfilling. So where do Sandpoint's recycling go? They go to the Spokane Material Recovery Technology Center, which we abbreviate as SMART. So they are picked up from homes, and then they are taken to a transfer station where they are reloaded and driven to our facility. It was built in 2012, where we receive materials from Central, Eastern Washington, and North Idaho. They're sorted by machines. We just did a $15 million upgrade that was completed this year, and we're planning to have a kind of grand reopening in April. And we'll be doing some tours, so we would love for any and all of you to come and tour our facility. So with all this collection of recyclables, we often get asked, like, why can't I recycle everything, or why does my list look different from a list maybe in Seattle or somewhere else that you may have moved from? So we kind of go by three chairs or three legs to a stool for recyclability. So the material, can we manipulate the product to be made into a new product? So if it's like a paper towel, the fibers are really thin, and if we were going to sort that, try to make it into a new paper towel, it would just fall apart. So we're looking for items that can be made into new products. And then if we can collect those items, and that's, you know, a viable thing to be made in new markets, there are markets for it. Just because it can be made into that item, does somebody want to buy that? And then if it's coming to SMART, can SMART sort it out of the recyclables? But once they come there, they all have to be sorted out and baled, and if we don't have the proper equipment to sort it, then we can't collect it. So this is another good example of why we can't recycle everything. So there's a lot of things that maybe could be recycled but can't be sorted, and plastic bags is one of those. So a lot of grocery stores will take them back, and they can be made at Rex decking, but if they come to our SMART Center, they get caught in the wheels. So we have to shut down our equipment. We have to go in, as you can see these gentlemen here going in and cutting the actual plastic bags out of the equipment. So it's slowing down and causing contamination. So it's one of our big contamination problems, plastic bags, not just like plastic bags that you're putting in the recycling bin, but also bagging of recyclables. And I think that a couple of retailers out there sell blue recycling bags to put your recyclables in, or they ask you just to have them loose and free in your recycling cart, even paper bags. So although this bag is recyclable, and it's a great thing to store your recyclables in, we ask you just empty it out, and then you can put the bag also in, but don't keep the things in the bag so that they can get sorted properly. So here is an example of a list of recyclables that we use on some of our containers. We have no food or liquids, no foam cups or containers, no plastic bags or film, no GreenWest, no clothing, and no batteries. So I'm going to show a video in a quick minute, but these are just small little videos to show, for example, our plastic bottles. So what we have at the SMART Center is what are called TTEC machines, or like little optical is what are called TTECH machines or like little optical sorters. Like AI technology, the bottles go underneath and they detect what kind of plastic it is. And then further down the line is um, a burst of air, which you'll hear in the video, shoots that bottle to where it needs to go to be sorted into the correct bale. And then same thing with paper. We have paper screens and they're well, this is one, this one's more showing what happens in the very beginning. So in the very beginning, we take out a lot of contaminants by hand. And then they go over these discs and the three dimensional stuff kind of falls to the bottom and the flat paper cardboard is floating on top and goes to a paper screen. Caught up in those discs. And then we have metal which are getting pulled off. You can see in there. So where does it all go? So plastic bottles can be turned into new clothing, carpet. Um, even the carts that you have at the curb are made out of post consumer recyclables. My shoes are made out of plastic bottles. A lot of times um, down jackets now that have alternative down. Um, that's made out of plastic and a lot of fleece, can be better plastic. Um, today's news can become a new cereal box, aluminum cans can be made in a new one in sixty days. So here is a little virtual tour of our SMART Center. This is before we did some upgrades, but most of the process is still the same. If I can get it to come up here. Yes.
Things are moving and changing quickly in the world today, and so much of it seems beyond our control. One thing that's completely up to you and me is the health and resiliency of our community we're.
Re-share with this video. It's not showing the correct screen.
And WM is here to partner with you in making a real difference. Is what I do next really that important? It absolutely is. What I do next can be the difference between this box ending up in the trash or a new product on the store shelf. It's up to you and me. Let's keep this super simple. Recycling has to be clean, loose, and unlike today, dry. So let's focus on the basics here. Paper, jugs, cardboard, cans, and plastic bottles. And make sure that you empty out all of the liquids before it goes into the recycling. And, oh my. Please, plastic bags are a no-no. Plastic bags are actually a big problem for all of our recycling programs here today. A lot of people think it's okay to take your recyclables and put them inside of a plastic bag, wrap it up, and put it in there. Don't do this. So how do you know what goes in the cart? It's no secret. You can find out by checking your local recycling guide that comes in the mail. You can also check your local service provider's guide where you can find your regional hauler's information. So let's talk about what to put in your cart. It all ends up in this truck here, same as all your neighbors' carts. Now, if we learn how to put all the right stuff in here, then we're going to be on our way to the recycling plant, and that is what I'm talking about. But if we put too much of the wrong stuff in here, it's going to be like we're hauling a big pile of garbage. Let's go see what happens when we recycle right. This is the SMART Center where Waste Management processes recyclables from homes, schools, and businesses from all across the region. Let's go ahead inside. Here at the SMART Center, people and machines work in unison to separate all the paper, cardboard, cans, and plastic bottles. This place has state of the art equipment like magnetic belts that pull out the cans, optical sorters, computers with eyes that trigger blasts of air to separate the plastic bottles. Check this out. I want to show you how the eddy current moves the aluminum out of the way. It's using a reverse magnetic current to push out the aluminum. Because aluminum is not magnetic. Paper and cardboard are sorted by these spinning discs. The two dimensional paper surfs over the top of the discs while three dimensional bottles and cans fall through to the belts below. People and machines are double checking everything at every turn. Efficient, right? Well, remember that little warning about plastic bags? If too many plastic bags get through here, what we call tanglers, it can actually shut down the entire system and make our recycling programs so much more expensive to maintain. And here we are. We got paper and cardboard, check. Aluminum cans, check. Plastic, check. All of it baled up and ready to go to manufacturers to come new products. Well, that sure was a lot of moving parts to you guys, but I'll tell you what, none of this works without you and me. Let's go over what we learned today. The key is recycle right. What does that mean? Number one, focus on the basics. Clean cardboard and paper, cans like soup cans and soda cans, plastic bottles and jugs like ketchup bottles and milk jugs. Number two, now let's remember, food and liquids contaminate recyclables, so they're not able to be made into new products. Keep food and liquid out of the recycling. Number three, no plastic bags. They wrap around equipment and have to be manually cut away at the recycling center. This creates delays and safety hazards. How about putting recyclables in plastic bags before they go in my container? No, no, never. Just toss them in loose. How clean do recyclables need to be? Cans and plastic bottles should be clean, dry, and free of most food before they go in the recycling. Give them a quick rinse to remove residue or use something like a spatula if needed. Finally, where can I find the full list of what's recyclable in my community? It's in your local recycling guide on the Waste Management website. Just go to WMNorthwest.com. Now I'm going to show you a closer look at what happens when we recycle plastic bottles. We turn these into usable materials like this vest. This fleece sweater, even this hard plastic chair is made from recycled materials. Oh, even my shoes are from recycled materials. And to top it all off, even the cart that we had placed in front of your home was made from recycled materials. And that is what brings us back home. I know what I need to do to keep my recycling program strong and healthy, and I'm up for it. You guys with me? Let's do this.
That's our virtual tour. See if this comes back up now. Nope. Let's being a reshare every piece here. Back up, there we go. So what's more important than even recycling? Uh, we kind of preached the three Rs, so reduce, reuse, and recycle is would be the last tier of that, and I'm sure you've heard that before. Um, so just promoting using usable bags and reusable mugs. Most of the coffee shops I've experienced up here will let you fill your mug, which is awesome. So I was going to do a quick knowledge test now that you're all experts on some kind of tricky things. Um, so a plastic shampoo bottle, what do you think? Yes. How about a container of almond butter?
Oh, gross, yes.
Even though it has a little bit of almond residue left. This is a yes.
Oh, it is?
Then you have to be completely clean, just spoon clean?
Okay, so I I have a question then, because I was told liquids, any any plastic bottle that holds liquids. Cause I was going to ask you, why are a lot of the containers that we get things in that have the number one through five on the bottom are not recyclable?
So that goes to that three legged stool. So if there's not a market for it, and if we can't sort it, or if it can't be made into a new product, right?
But there is a market for the peanut butter and almond butter?
Yes, these kind of jars. How about?
I learned something. Yes.
The yes, we just ask that you remove the lid, so no lids. So then here is a tricky one. How about a milk curtain?
No.
This is a no. So we have, it's what has wet string, so it's like a plastic coating over the paper. If we put milk into paper, it would just spill everywhere, right? So it has this wet string, so this can't be separated from each other. So that's a no. Um, how about this?
Oh, dang.
Nope.
It even has a recycling symbol on here, and this is what throws everybody off, right? So this is not accepted. This might be accepted somewhere, just not here. Or maybe there's a place you could take it somewhere. So that can be confusing. Um, and then we have the holidays coming up. How about wrapping paper?
No, no.
Wrapping papers are yes. So most paper, even if it has like film from the window of an envelope, it's still accepted. If it has tape or staple, it's still accepted.
But if it has like glitter, tissue paper that has glitter.
That's metallic or glitter.
Right, I cannot.
Yeah. And then this is another one we get a lot of questions about. And this one actually has a no on their plastic. So this is not recyclable, reusable, but not recyclable. And then similar, we have this one here which kind of looks like that, but if you look on the interior of it, it's made out of all paper, which is pretty cool. So this whole thing is recyclable. And then similar on that same note, um, this, this has a recycle symbol on it. But no, this is not recyclable. So the only plastics that are recyclable are like bottles and jugs like these or like a milk jug. Or loaded church it jugs, yeah.
So can we go back to the peanut butter thing? Just those, just that shape in size or?
Any shape or size that has this kind of screw top lid. So normally they're.
Okay, so it has to have a screw top lid?
Yeah, so there are ones and twos, but we're kind of getting away from the ones and twos because there's some things that don't have markets like clamshells. So we really have gone to like bottles and jugs to help with the confusion. Um, so just by shape.
And then that's because there are no buyers.
Correct.
What happens if the buyers, if a buyer comes? What if? What if somebody?
Term like stable market.
Right.
We would definitely start collecting that.
Okay, and then you would let us know somehow through the city or something.
Yeah.
And then um, I just want to share pizza boxes. You can't do pizza boxes because they get grease from the pizza. But I've noticed people are now trying to put, the pizza places are putting like a, another layer on top of the paper box. But if that seeps through, still can't do the.
You could rip the top off and recycle the top portion.
The top of it. Oh, that's as long as it doesn't have grease on it. And I just want to share that since I was doing the recycling, trying to get the recycling bins in the city, that I've spent a lot of time at Waste Management, because every time I talk to a business, they're like, we don't recycle anyway. Everything goes to the dump. And I I can tell you, I have been there. I have taken pictures on my phone. I've got videos on my phone. They go through a huge process at Colburn to get recyclables down to Spokane. So I think that's pretty awesome. Glass is not, and what's the deal with glass?
Glass, well, the one supplier that was taking glass in Washington State actually stopped a little while ago, so all of the glass that we collect now and sort at our center is used as a roadbed cover at one of our landfills.
So can we still put glass then in the recycling?
Yes, it's just not being recycled at this time.
It's not being recycled?
Yeah.
Well, then what, should we put it in the garbage?
That would probably be a better place.
Okay. Okay, and I just one more thing for anybody who cares. Plastic bags, the only place in town that was taking plastic bags was Super One. They quit. Um, I went and talked to the manager the other day and it's a, it's about whoever was coming to pick up. And they're how they store. Anyway, they didn't want to do it anymore. The only place in town now is Walmart. So if you save your plastic bags, Walmart, if you go in, I never go into Walmart, but all the way over on by the grocery store, there's three, there's a big bin and it takes plastic bottles and the plastic bags. So anybody who's saving your plastic bags to recycle.
Any council members have questions for Tammy? Tammy, I have one. Do you know what um, percentage or approximately how much of your recycled materials get shipped out of country?
Um, most of them stay hyper local. Um, aluminum cans do go to the East Coast, but all of the plastics stay here. I do think we have one supplier in British Columbia, so not the US, but super close. So that's our focus for the long term.
Most of it stays domestically. Cool. Thanks for taking the time.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Duquette, for educating us.
I have some guides, and then I also have some state connected, so I'll leave these here. And then I have some cute little um, garbage carts that you can remember to recycle, right? So I'll leave these here. Thank you so much.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah.
And just one more comment about the flyers. I had a big discussion with Monique about how we're getting the flyers and they thought the city was sending them. I don't know, Melissa, if you know about the city sending those flyers? How do we get them? Nobody knew, like Michelle, who takes the utilities, she didn't know. And Travis said he thought, he thought they were, city was mailing them. City thought you guys were mailing them.
We would mail them, but since all of the customers are city billed, we don't have the addresses to mail them to. So if that's something we want to coordinate in the future, normally we bring some and drop them off here.
So then people would have to come get them themselves, because.
Well, the Sustainability Committee could go and distribute them too.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea, because all of my neighbors and friends are like, we never got one.
And the guy's all online, so there's a local website that it just. It's on there. There's an FAQ about recyclables. If people have more questions about that too, so.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Tammy. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Tammy. I will now yield the floor to staff for some quick reports from the departments.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Council President.
If I may, real quick, while he's on his way up here, and the Sustainability Committee may be discussing a link on the website within the Utilities Department. So people can access that information.
On the Utilities Bill?
Just within the Utilities tab and how you pay your bill, we might be able to connect some link for information on that.
Right, that'd be great also, because that's just, I think people would recycle if they had more information.
City Engineer, Brandon Stegman.
I, um, I just wanted to provide a little um, clarification on the truck routes. Um, so we we have kind of three north-south routes on um, on the truck route map right now. It's Division, Boyer, and Fifth Avenue, right? Um, but remember Baldi Avenue doesn't connect to Fifth Avenue. So while we're having this discussion, it sounded to me like maybe we're talking about potentially removing or something, the Boyer from the truck route. Just be aware that it's not just through town trucks that we're talking about. It's a lot of it is local trucks and those are typically generated off of Baldi and directly north of that. So if you're I just want everybody to be aware that if we're going through this discussion of maybe removing Boyer from the truck route, you're essentially moving all of the, that traffic, that truck traffic onto Division, past the schools.
I was thinking Fifth. To aim them to Fifth, where all the other traffic trucks will be going.
But what I'm saying is that a lot of it's generated in town. So if you're coming from Baldi, you're not going to drive all, all the way, you know, there's no way to get down to Fifth because there's no connection over there.
Right.
So.
From Baldi.
Thanks, Brandon.
Or you're going to Baldi. So just be aware of that. But um, you know, if we. Okay.
It just seems the logging trucks usually going to the mills.
Logging trucks specifically, yeah.
Thanks, and Councilwoman Duquette, I just ask, we're going to try to keep things um, organized, so if you can ask to be um, recognized.
Sorry.
Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Yep. Any other staff members want to give an update or report? Welker.
I mean, you're planning on developing.
I had updates. I was trying to make eye contact, so I thought I'd just come on up. Good evening, everybody. Um, I've got some updates in my vast department. Um, to share with you this week, as usual, we're approaching the final homestretch of the Sports Center project, so I'll give you a couple of updates on that. First of all, um, the parking lot was closed again today for striping after the asphalt work was completed two or three weeks ago. So that parking lot, I haven't even seen it myself yet. I'm looking forward to seeing the the beautifully striped parking lot, which will hopefully improve parkgoers' experience for all of the different amenities of Traverse Park. Um, also, very, very, very active week at the Traverse Project this week because of the nice weather. So we had the landscaping team, Dewdrop was in town. They finished the irrigation system yesterday. That has now been pressure tested. It's all ready to keep our eighty-eight newly planted trees irrigated next spring. The trees are arriving tomorrow. That has now been pressure tested. It's all ready to keep our eighty-eight newly planted trees irrigated next spring. The trees are arriving tomorrow from Bonners Ferry Nursery. And they'll start to go in the ground in the next few days. That project will take a couple of weeks to wrap up all the landscaping. Our professional playground installer's been on site for a week and a half now. He's got about half of the playground features installed. I encourage you to swing by and have a look at those. They're coming together. The playground, we expect to be done by December first. The power was turned on this week, Monday. The power was switched on to the building for the first time. That was super exciting. As the floor has been getting surfaced, they've had to bring in these big spotlights and power them with generators, but for the first time, I went in there Tuesday and saw the building with all the lights on, which is pretty cool. I even, when driving home last night, saw the lights on in the evening. You could see that kind of soft glow through those translucent panels above the entry canopy. So it's pretty neat to see that come together with the power. We also will have skate park lighting starting early next week. So I think we're going in another rainy week, but when we have another dry week, we'll look forward to seeing kids out there after dark skating for the first time. That's something the skate community has wanted forever. And we got that Idaho Gem Grant, fifty thousand dollars to pay for the skate park lighting, so I'm super stoked to see that happen next week. There's eight twelve-foot-tall outdoor dark sky compliant lights going around the pedestrian path around the building, which are going to be installed next week as well. So one thing that's going to definitely change is that Traverse Park has always been like a daytime-only park facility, but with the Sports Center opening up early next month, with the outdoor lighting that's going in, with the skate park being illuminated, that park's going to be usable, you know, until eight, nine PM throughout the year going forward. So we're pretty excited to see all the improvements going on with the electrification of Traverse Park.
Jason, the tennis courts are currently lit, so it's not untypical for lights to be on there.
Yeah, the outdoor courts have been lit. We've, you know, we've got the ball field users would love to have night play opportunities as well. There's Sandpoint Affordable Football League is looking for solutions to putting lights up at not Traverse, but Great Northern Park. So we are looking at other opportunities for funding for providing more evening recreation in Traverse Park and the adjacent parks in the future. Very exciting. I gave each of you a copy of the weekly operating schedule, which was finalized this week by our new facility supervisor. This was this was Daniel, I Daniel, I was going to introduce Daniel in a moment, but Daniel's our new facility supervisor. He's in Week three or Week Two now of his employment at the city. Daniel joins us from Surprise, Arizona. He's got twenty years of recreation supervision. And the first task I gave him was to meet all of the primary users. So we had the high school, middle school tennis teams in, we had the Sandpoint Tennis Association and the Panhandle Pickleball Club and the Sandpoint Public Pickleball Group all came in for kind of a community meetings last week. And we went over several draft operating schedules with them. And Daniel took all their feedback and came up with this final draft of our operating schedule, which has now been shared back out with that primary user group. And we've gotten really positive feedback just today on Daniel's final draft op or final operating schedule. So this is what we are striving to to offer the community starting December second, when we open. The other exciting development is that a week and a half ago, we posted the facilities services representative position. This is the front desk staff position. We've had seven applicants for that. We're lining up interviews with those applicants right now. So we're very excited that we look to hopefully be fully staffed and able to be open for thirteen hours a day, starting December second. Some other important dates with the Sports Center, we've got a facility dedication scheduled for the twenty-six. You've all received invitations in your city email addresses. I'd love to see you there. The mayor will be there, the Russells would be there. Some of our just really important partners in this project will be there. And then our kind of public open house is scheduled for the morning of Thanksgiving, as you know, with the turkey trot. Actually met with the executive director of the Bonner County Food, Bonner Community Food Bank today, and we're partnering with them and the YMCA to do their annual food drive at the Sports Center this year. So we're looking forward to showing the facility to the community as a whole on Thanksgiving morning. And then open for public play on December second. That's a Monday. We were saying December first, but I don't think we'll have our staff come in on that first Sunday of the month. So we'll be open for the public on December second. We, the mayor mentioned some of our other new staff, the Planning and Community Development Department welcomed our new Planning Tech/Admin Assistant, Krista Lester, last Monday. She is already proving to be an extremely important team member. She joins us from Nevada, where she worked as a planning technician there. So my department is fully staffed right now with the addition of Daniel last Monday, and, or sorry, Daniel two Mondays ago and Krista last Monday. So I'm super excited to have a fully staffed Planning and Community Development Department. Finally, on the planning front, just a couple of updates. One big project that we expect to see ground broken on before the end of the year is the multifamily development north of Super One, known as Tribute. That project is in final review for its building permits right now. About a hundred multifamily units and mixed-use commercial on the ground floor. You're going to see that lot, actually, it's two lots north of Super One. In the next couple of months, start to see some site improvements. And just an update. You know, the Hotel of City Beach, we've been in pretty regular meetings with the developers of the Hotel of City Beach. Their project is moving forward. They're working on some possible revisions that might require a change to their CUP, but nothing definitive right now. They've been partnering with the Sandpoint Sailing Association because they're looking at doing some dock improvements down there that might impact the Sailing Association. So they want to make sure that they have the support of the primary user group down at the Windbag Marina. So just some updates for you in the planning world there. If you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, I'm looking forward to seeing you guys. Well, I'll see you at the next council meeting before we do the Sports Center dedication.
Thanks. Any questions for Director Welker?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask?
Also, woman Duquette, you are recognized.
Did I miss where these would be for people? Did you share?
We just, literally, that was created this morning, and we shared it out with the primary user groups today. So
Is it going to be online?
Yes, it will. Yeah, yeah. It'll get posted to the Sports Center page on our website. And in the next couple of weeks, you're relaunching the social media page for the Sports Center as well, once we've got that kind of ready to go. For kind of the communicating with the community about, you know, programs, events, things like that. Schedules.
Jason, you want to touch briefly on the new rec software and what that
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's also, Cheryl deserves a ton of credit. She and her team, Amber, who Justin mentioned earlier tonight, she's our new procurement officer at the city. They worked with Katie Bradbury, myself, and the finance team to go through several submissions for new recreation software. We ended up with three finalists that we reviewed. They gave demos to our team. And we settled on a company called Vermont Systems that provides a software solution called RecTrack. It's a far more robust, mobile-friendly recreation management software than our current RecOne. Anybody who's signed up for a city rec program through our city website, it's got a lot of tabs. Let's just put it that way. So there's a lot of clicking through different tabs, and it's not the easiest to navigate. So we're going to be transitioning into the next three or four weeks to RecTrack. And their first task is, we're not going to worry about mortgage right now. We're not going to worry about RV park rental. We're worrying about getting the membership and the court reservations and community room reservations, all those things online for the Sports Center. So when people show up on December second, they can go on their phone, book a court, pay their three dollars or their five dollars, whatever it is, come in, scan their phone on a little reader and walk in and use the court. So we're hoping to be basically a cashless and even cardless system at the Sports Center. Once we're up and running, it'll all be handled through the mobile app or through the website. So eventually RecTrack will replace our current recreation software for all of the recreation and parks management stuff, including, you know, picnic shelters, reserving field space in Memorial Field, paying for your slip at the marina, reserving a site at the RV campground, all of the things that we do, and signing up for any recreation program. So that's, by next spring, we will have rolled out RecTrack for all of our parks and recreation management.
Thanks, Jason. Any other questions for Director Welker?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
So I'm assuming that this is somewhat of a work in progress until we get feedback from the community.
This is based on, yeah, we did a lot of, we provided four drafts to the community last week. That's not any of those four drafts. This was based on the feedback we got from the community last week. When I say the community, I mean the primary user groups. This also does not include all the other activities that will go on in there, such as parks and recreation programming that the city offers. We don't schedule that on our like weekly operating schedule, but any of those ninety-minute slots can be reserved by any community group for a variety of different activities. So that's just our like generic, if there's nothing extraordinary scheduled in a certain week, this is the operating schedule that we're going to be going with. And the request from, the feedback from the community was they wanted like a certainty, so that like every other day at the same time, there's going to be pickleball open play, or there's going to be tennis only play. So the community wanted, they actually requested there was more separation of uses than we were originally proposing. So you'll see that about half of the week is still kind of tennis or pickleball, but then about half of the week is either tennis only or primarily pickleball. And even during those primarily pickleball times, we still have at least one, possibly two tennis courts available for drop-in play for tennis.
Okay, then I'm going to assume that you're still working on some of the other user groups as this evolves and then something that I've heard from the community and had interest outside of pickleball and tennis is walking times for people with disabilities or elderly or especially in the winter time months to have a place to walk.
Yeah, you'll notice that there's that community court time scheduled a couple of times a day. Those can be times where there will be like perimeter walking opportunities around the the walking area on the perimeter.
Okay, because that wasn't clarified in the key above, so I was wondering if that community time would be that time.
There are just some policy things that we're still working on, Daniel's still working on.
Right. That's why I say it's still work in progress.
Like, he's meeting with, actually, one of the things Daniel's working on today was understanding the specifications for the like court surface and the product and what kind of footwear is allowed to be used and things like that. We just have to be a little careful as far as how you know, I want to tell the whole community like, oh, yeah, you can come have soccer practice in here, but we have to figure those things out still. It's a sports center. City staff is never going to call this the James Z Russell Tennis and Pickleball Club, because it's not. It's a sports center. We're looking for all sorts of ways to activate it for various sports. But that when I, you'll always hear me refer to the primary user group, that's because the courts are striped for tennis and pickleball, so that's the primary user group. We, trust me, city staff would love nothing more than have ultimate frisbee, volleyball, softball practice, baseball practice. We want to do all those things. We just have to figure it out. And these first few months are going to be basically making the facility open to the primary user group while we figure out how to get other user groups in there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Welker? Thanks so much, Jason, for all your hard work. Good evening, Mr. Eric Bush.
Good evening, councilors. Eric Bush, City Forester, Construction Manager. I've got my City Forester hat on tonight. I wanted to let you know, Idaho Department of Lands maintains a handful of councils committees, much like Sandpoint has just reinstituted. I was just appointed to one of those. It's Idaho Lands Resource Coordinating Council, bit of a mouthful at I L R C C. What they do is make management recommendations to the state landlord. And their current task is updating the five-year forest action plan. They have quarterly meetings. The next one's coming up in a couple of weeks in Boise, so I'll be going down to that and learning more about what they do and getting involved with that. On the day-to-day, that won't really have much of an impact on my duties as City Forester, but I will be working with there's twenty-four members of this committee. And there are foresters, biologists, various specialties. So by default, I'll pick up a lot of relevant information that I can bring back to Sandpoint and utilize. So I'm excited to join that. It's a, you know, an important thing for Sandpoint to have a member on there. I was asked by IDL's Community Forester. So just wanted to let you know that. I'm excited to get going, and as I learn more, I'll provide updates more appropriate.
Thanks, Eric. Enjoy that. I think Chief, I know Cheryl's good, Sarah's good. Excellent. Next, we'll proceed with the public comment portion of the meeting. If you wish to speak and haven't yet completed a sign-up form, please do so and hand to a staff member at the back of the room. Like to speak on any item included in this evening's agenda, now is your opportunity to do so. For the purpose of general public forum, you are also welcome to comment on any topic pertinent to the business of the city's standpoint that is not included on the agenda. Those attending remotely who wish to speak may raise their hand on Zoom at this time. Like to make everyone aware, the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted here in the chambers at the entrance doors. In summary, I'd ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful, not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be disorderly and disruptive, no calling out, clapping, or holding signs, et cetera. Please note that the council cannot take testimony on any planning-related matters outside of an official public hearing. Public comment time is for comment only. No questions or debate. You're welcome to contact me during regular business hours if you have any questions or concerns. Again, this is your opportunity to speak on any item on the agenda, on any item of general nature relevant to the business of the city. This is the only public comment time that will be afforded this evening. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside in Sandpoint city limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. With that, Madam Clerk, is anyone signed to speak during the public comment time?
Mr. Mayor, no one in the room has signed up to speak. I'll give those on Zoom just a moment. There are no hands raised. I don't believe anybody wishes to speak during public comment time this evening.
And that will conclude the public comment portion of this evening's meeting. We'll now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is two million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents, reflecting one million, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six cents for regular payables and seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents for payroll. Counsel, are there any questions or any items you wish to remove from the consent calendar? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
By Schreiber, second by Spiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. New business with no old business on the agenda. We'll move into new business and propose resolution accepting the recommendation of selected art for the Fall 2024 Silver Box Public Art on Loan Program. I now yield the floor to Arts and Historic Preservation Planner Heather Updike. Hi, Heather.
Hello, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's so great to see you all. I'm really excited to share our recommendations from the Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation Commission for our Silver Box program. First of all, I'd just like a little moment of celebration. So two months ago, we deinstalled the last cycle of the Silver Box program. Just as a reminder, this is our Art on Loan program. So traditionally, they've gone from an annual cycle. Each artist gets awarded, gets a thousand dollars to have their art up. The art is for sale. The city would get ten percent of the artists sold. It's just a great way to recognize our art community, celebrate them, and get their word out. So it's been very successful. And one of the things that happened from this last cycle is we got a new public art piece for the Sandpoint Public Art Collection. This piece is the Natural Wavelength by Ursula Roma. She ended up donating the sculpture after that cycle to the city. So it's just another way that this program has been very fruitful for our community. So we're looking forward to getting that installed in the perfect location. And once that happens, we'll look forward to sharing that with you. So one of the things that the commission, ACHP, wanted to do was to make sure that we had a change cycle during the springtime. So they decided to, and to also ensure that there's art on the boxes, do a six-month cycle. So again, this is different than the typical year loan, and each artist would be getting five hundred dollars. We did things a little differently this cycle too, because instead of using a national call-out artist software, we decided to try out our local networks. So we put it on all of the Sandpoint, City of Sandpoint webpages, and we went through all of our art channels and really spread the word out. It was a quick call. We did it in about two weeks. But I, there's, this program has been very successful, and I think the artist's community really appreciates it. So we were able to get during that quick period of time three applicants, as Justin spoke to earlier, which was exciting. Just as a reminder, the stanchions that the art is set on are in three locations, which are up here. So we have one at Fifth and Oak by the Columbia Bank Building. There's one over by Fourth and Oak, so that's right near Farmin's Park and the food cart area. And then we also have one by the post office on Fourth and Church. Each box is a little different, different height, you know, different feels. So it's important that when we're doing the selection of the art pieces, we're aware of the perfect location for them as well. I went over that. We had the selection criteria that we went through. This program has been going for many years now, so we feel very confident about the requirements. So the first artist that submitted was Annalee Harris, and the sculpture she put forth is Proud Phillies. And it's a combination of powder-coated iron and granite. It sits at forty-eight inches by twenty by twenty. She's from Bonners Ferry, and she actually goes by Lee. Um, Lee is probably recognizable to you because she was an artist that did um the last cycle and was that. So we're excited to have her back, um submitting again. So the next one, um Dave Gonzo. So this is um a piece that it will be done um at completion of installation, of course, but he sent us a rendering. Um, it will be, the name of the sculpture is Living in Color. It's thirty six by thirty six by twenty four. It's steel and copper. And um he's a metalsmith. He uh does some really unique things with mixed metals and then does like a flame treatment on it. Um, he is a Poek artist um in Sandpoint and does a lot of classes through Poek. Um, and Dave also was the previous um selected artist as well. So it's wonderful. He had a great experience. He was excited to apply again. And then the third application is a new artist um to us. And he's actually a woodcarver and Denny Henson. And his proposed piece um is called Quiet Descent. It's three feet by four feet and eighteen inches. It's made out of Western red cedar. Um, he's going to make sure that there's a treatment, a sealant on it to make sure it's protected from all of the different elements of weather. And he also, according to some of the previous pieces that um of his works that he submitted to show us, you know, his portfolio, he does this beautiful kind of torch technique, kind of blacken some of the pieces of the wood. And um it's really exciting to have this media um put forth. So we had three artists submit. The Commission, Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation Commission um is recommending that um you all um uh approve um all three of these um submissions for the uh fall phase of the um Silver Box Program. Do you guys have any questions?
Heather, I just have one. Were there other other um submissions or these were the three?
These were the three. Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Schreber.
So you mentioned that um we're going to six months when before it was a year?
Yes.
Will we be going back to a year in the spring or will it be six months from now on?
That's a wonderful question. Um, I I think traditionally, the annual cycle has worked out really well. And so that is currently the plan.
Okay, so this will be the only one that's six months.
That's correct.
Got it.
Any other council questions? I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution, accepting the recommendation of selected art for the fall two thousand twenty four Silver Box Public Art on Loan Program and approval of accompanying agreements. So, oh, I need a motion in a second. Moved by Spiro, I think second by uh Duquette. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yep.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Heather, for all your work and mission. And the artist. Next, we'll have an invasive species update, particularly on the discovery of the spongy moth in our area. And I'll now yield the floor to Urban Forester Eric Bush and someone on our screen.
Good, good evening, councilors. Uh, Eric Bush, City Forester. Green is Erica Eaton. Erica, I apologize if I mispronounced your last name.
No worries.
Erica's a Forest Health Specialist at Idaho Department of Lands. Um, a couple of months ago, they found a sample of the uh invasive spongy moth that um defoliates and can ultimately kill oak tree uh uncontained. Um, so Erica has um their IDL's monitoring plan has worked. Um, and Erica is going to give us a little bit more information about that.
Yes, thank you, Eric. I'm just going to share my screen here. All right, can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So yes, um I am an entomologist with the Idaho Department of Lands Forest Health Program. Um, just a probably a quick five minute update. We don't anticipate this to be a huge problem, um but I did want to make everyone aware. So a quick executive summary, um in September, this past September, our team did capture um one singular invasive spongy moth in Sandpoint, and this was during our routine annual trapping. This moth was detected quickly and early on. The detection is very unlikely to result in any problems because it was detected so quickly. Um, and then next year, we will be conducting heavy trapping around the detection site to see if there are any more moths in the area or if this was just kind of a one off hitchhiker, which is what we believe it is. Um, so residents will be seeing many of these traps around Sandpoint next summer. And um Idaho Department of Lands, my team will be working on education and outreach to help people understand what the traps are doing there and why they should um leave them alone. So there's no action required of City Council. This is just informational only. And just to dive into a little bit more detail on this, um so spongy moth, um a lot of people are more familiar with its previous name, which is gypsy moth. It was recently changed by the Entomological Society of America in two thousand twenty one to align with the French common name. So it's the same thing if you've heard of it. It was introduced into the eastern U S uh way back in eighteen sixty nine by an amateur entomologist who was trying to produce silk, which is a little bit ironic because these absolutely do not produce silk. They produce short hairs. Uh, it has since spread throughout the eastern U S. So that red area on the map, the purple line is kind of the advancing front. Um, but it it causes millions of dollars of damage um in that red area. And that's because, like Eric said, it um the caterpillar stage feeds on the leaves of broadleaf trees. It can feed on about three hundred different species, but it really prefers oak trees. So it can do a lot of damage. Um, it's capable of hitchhiking to the uninfested areas. Um, so all the gray areas on the map there, including Idaho. And it does so on things like firewood, um RVs or campers, vehicles, outdoor furniture that may be moved with someone moving to Idaho and other items that people can travel with. So in an effort to keep spongy moth out of Idaho, the Idaho Department of Lands, specifically my team, leads a program to quickly detect any new introductions of spongy moth. Um, we place traps all across the state. So you can see that map there. All the blue traps are managed by Idaho Department of Lands. The green ones are by the Forest Service up in northern Idaho. The yellow ones are Idaho State Department of Agriculture and the pink are Forest Service down in southern Idaho. Um, while we're doing this, we're all following protocols developed by the Federal Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service, so AFIS. Um, and I would actually add that we trap a little bit more intensively than they recommend just for added insurance, that we catch any new detections early. So we've got almost thirty five hundred traps in total. Um, we trap them kind of on a rotation. So there's every year probably about two thousand traps out. So in Sandpoint, specifically in the surrounding areas, since it's a little bit more populated than some of our more rural communities, we do place traps every year at a density of about one trap per square mile. So um that's really good news because it's very unlikely that there's an infestation that's been happening um any longer than this year because we are visiting those sites every single year. I've got a picture of the trap there in the corner. Um, that's what they look like and how they work is if you were to open that trap up, the inside walls of the trap are covered with a sticky substance. And then we place a pheromone lure inside the trap that mimics a female moth. So the traps are attractive to males and we're only targeting the males there, um which is good because we're not pulling any, you know, potentially reproducing females in any direction. These traps are generally placed in the public right of way, um so along road sides or in cities kind of along the sidewalk area. And we place them in summer and then we collect them for evaluation every fall. So this is um the map of Sandpoint. That yellow cross there is the site where we had one single moth captured this past September. So it was near Oak Street and Division. Um, and that means that for next year, we're planning on doing the the intensive, what's called delimitation trapping. And the preliminary locations are all these pink dots. And what this is, is a trap placed, uh sorry, thirty six traps per square mile placed in the four square miles surrounding the capture area. And I want to point out that these pink dots on the map right now are just um they're placed in the center of the grid, but that's not the exact location where the traps will be placed. We're we're going to be doing our best to place all these traps in um places that make sense. So this is actually the first capture of spongy moth in Sandpoint since the trapping program began back in the um nineteen seventies. There was a capture back in uh nineteen eighty six and moths were captured in Sandpoint all the way up through nineteen ninety. But because of the program, it was successfully eradicated by nineteen ninety one. And this is the first time we've seen a spongy moth in Sandpoint since that time. I did send it into um AFIS for DNA analysis just to confirm that it was the European spongy moth. So we know that it's European strain of spongy moth and that's the same kind that that is infesting the eastern U S. So most likely, this was a hitchhiker from somebody traveling from the east. Um, very likely a one off because we only caught the one moth. Um, so versus like if somebody traveled with fire firewood that had a whole egg mass on it, we would probably see a lot more moths in the trap. Um, so likely this is just a single one that came out here. We caught it and I'm very hopeful that that will be the end of it. But um just to be sure, we'll be putting all these traps out. So starting around July twenty twenty five, um we'll be placing those traps. Unfortunately, we have the experience where these traps are frequently destroyed or vandalized, I'm assuming, because people don't quite know what they are or understand their purpose. So we'll be creating some flyers to help with the public education on those. Um, I'm also working with a lot of known contacts in Sandpoint. You know, we have an Idaho Department of Lands office up there with employees and anyone I know um who knows folks that live in that gridded area, who are willing to host a trap with permission on their private property instead of in the public right of way. I'm working with people to get these traps in safer spots so they won't be tampered with. Um, and you know, ideally, we'd be able to get all of those traps out, but I'm sure that there will be some grid cells on this map where due to uh limited access or lack of permission, we won't be able to trap, but we will do our best. Um, any traps that we can't place on private property with permission, we will be placing in the right of way or on public property. So so far, we've got a good proportion of them kind of placed in more specific locations. So all the blue dots on this map are ones where um I found a contact in that grid who agreed to host it on their private property. Um, and we've got plenty of time before July, so I'm hoping that we can turn a lot more of these points blue before that time. So um like I said, no action required um by the City of Sandpoint at this time, although we do appreciate support on messaging. And um any questions about the program can be directed to Idaho Department of Lands. So yeah, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Councilmember, any any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Council.
I just have a con- comment. Um, I'm in for those pink dots, so I can contact Eric and I'd be more than happy to host a trap.
That would be wonderful. I'd appreciate it.
And Erica, we just had um Counselor Duquette raise her hand and say she'd also be willing to host one. So um hopefully, we've got two more of those grids knocked out and I'm happy to work with you to um, you know, help fill those out as we get closer to the time, whether that's door knocking to neighbors or putting a call up to our councilors and community members to see if they would um help us figure out. Um, but hopefully, we'll um get all of our sites figured out and identified so we don't have any issues and we can trap as as needed.
Great, thank you so much for the support.
Any other questions from the council for Erica? Uh, Erica, I have one. Uh, assuming you find um uh just a thriving population here, um what's the mechanism for eradication? Is it aerial spraying of a pesticide or targeted, you know, traps or where does it go if things turn worse?
Yeah, so there's um, that's a great question. There's a few different steps that we would take before we would move to any sort of pesticide spray. Probably multiple years of the mass trapping to, you know, capture as many mosses possible. But um if there is a population that becomes established and that's shown through several years of delimitation trapping, the next step is typically a a treatment, but I will say that we would use um B T. So Bacillus thuringensis, it's a naturally occurring bacterium that's approved for use in organic agriculture. Very targeted to um caterpillars, doesn't affect, you know, birds, animals, other things like that. And it has a very short window of um activity, only about ten days after spraying. So it is very targeted to spongy moth in particular um and wouldn't affect most other things.
Monarch butterflies or caterpillars?
That's a really good question. So technically, they're they're in the same category of insects that can be affected by it, but their life cycle is different. So the time that um spongy moths are in the caterpillar life stage, which is when a spray would occur, is much earlier than the time when a monarch butterfly would be in the caterpillar life stage, so they wouldn't overlap.
That's nice.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for your information. We look forward to supporting your efforts uh in this situation, so.
Great, thank you so much.
And thanks for reaching out.
You bet.
Thank you for joining us, Erica. Um, I'm just wanted to say that I'm very grateful that Idaho Department of Lands has this program underway. Um, it's one of those situations where it's not a problem right now, but if we didn't know about it, it could become a huge problem and have a major effect on our tree canopy. So I'm grateful for Erica um and Idaho Department of Lands and that the USDA um kind of helps, um, you know, states manage these sorts of things.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks for taking the lead on this locally.
Thank you.
For the final item on the agenda, I want to provide an update and the latest information regarding the regulation of short term rentals in Idaho and the status of possible impending legislation. Uh, councilmembers, um just for some background, you may recall that last legislative session, there's a bill sponsored by uh Jordan Redman out of Quarter Lane that would have effectively um greatly reduced uh local jurisdictions' ability to regulate short term rentals. Um, we are part of a group called the Resort Communities Coalition. Uh, that's basically all the resort cities in the state. Um, we get together monthly and discuss legislation and issues that affect resort cities. Um, and I I'm seeking your uh individual feedback to me of, you know, at some point in the next uh week or so. Uh, here's the situation. Um, uh, the uh legislation was successfully killed by the Resort City Coalition and others um last last session. Um, it is very likely to come back uh quite uh severely. Um, and Chairman Klow, Klow, uh who is the uh chairman of the Business Committee um at the Legislature, has strongly suggested that um our coalition um work with uh the sponsor of the bill for some moderating language um that uh we may be able to live with. Specifically, there are three communities, at least three, that um approach uh short term rentals uniquely in the state. That is McCall, Lava Hot Springs and Sandpoint. Uh, McCall and Lava Hot Springs are currently in litigation regarding their short term rental uh regulations. Um, if you're not aware, uh or to remind you, in Sandpoint, we allow uh short term rentals um by owner occupancy with some typical health safety um inspections and business licensing and reporting um in the residential zones. In the commercial zones, we treat them like a basically one room hotel. So there's no restrictions on the number in town. However, in the residential zones, we limit the number of non owner occupied properties that are short term rentals to thirty five. Um, once we reach that thirty five limit, we start taking a um waiting list and uh somebody would have to come off that for the next person to be uh eligible to apply for a non owner occupied short term rental property. Um, my conundrum is um I am a strong advocate of local control. I feel that our local policies and regulations um have been developed uh and seem to be functioning well. I believe the current waitlist for the the non owner occupied is somewhere around uh nineteen um people waiting. So it doesn't seem like there's a huge waiting list. Uh, in addition, we have uh I believe close to two hundred permitted owner occupied short term rentals. So it seems like the market's working in Sandpoint. My biggest concern is that for decades, we have uh put a lot of effort to diversify our economic base here. We've spent a lot of time, effort, money, um, you know, trying to expand businesses, opportunities for our our diverse employers. And with our current housing situation, what we're seeing nationally is investors, speculators and hedge funds coming into places like Sandpoint where they purchase these homes that could otherwise be a year round home for an employee and convert them to a vacation rental. So in general, I I like our current policy and procedures. The challenge that I'm facing that I need your feedback on is um there are some part of our Resort City Coalition who will be taking a vote on November twenty first to determine whether the coalition wants to enter into negotiating. to determine whether the coalition wants to enter into negotiations with the sponsor of the bill to sort of come up with a more moderate language. The copy that I just gave you is sort of that blended version. The underline is what the coalition, Coalition's lobbyist has worked the coalition to get included. You will note that the proposed language, in my opinion, is still bad legislation. It strips the ability of the right to basically treat these more or differentiate them from a typical residential use. So it's somewhat limited. We have introduced Section Six. That does provide a few things. We're not yet sure whether the sponsor of the bill will be agreeable to our proposed amendments. The point is, if we enter into negotiations, whatever the outcome is, if the coalition agrees to it, members who entered into those negotiations cannot oppose the bill. My opinion is I would rather go down opposing bad legislation than work towards some kind of watered down compromise. It still strips us of our local ability to regulate short term rentals. So the, what I'm facing is I need to tell the coalition on the 21st whether I'm in or Sandpoint's in or out of this negotiation and sort of working with the sponsor of the bill for some unknown yet, you know, language. So my preference is to step back. The coalition is working on a provision that would still allow us to be in the coalition, but not be represented on this issue. So we could still speak in opposition to this bill. If, whatever the language is, unless it's pretty benign, I, I would hope to engage with our employers who need housing, with our hotels and with others who would seek to keep the status quo on the legislation for short term rentals. But I defer to you and I would seek your individual comments to me on your feelings on this, because I need to go one way or the other. And I want to make sure I'm aligned with the implied consent of the general city council. Do you have any questions that I can answer regarding this issue right now? Okay. So feel free to reach out to me via email, phone. Is it appropriate to get any thoughts at this time, legal or comment, general thoughts, ideas?
Provide general thoughts if they wish, or they can reach out to you at a later time.
Any council members want to save an email or a phone call and give me general ideas or thoughts?
Generally, I'd say I agree with you.
Thank you.
I'd like to read the, I'd like to read the draft first.
Thank you, Councilman Spiro. And if others of you are in the same boat, yeah, read it. If you have questions on it, reach out to me, please. But Council President Rule, do I see you leaning in?
Again, I would like to review this a little bit closer, but in general, I'm in favor of what we have in place now. I think we've done a pretty good job, but I kind of want to process all this and sleep on it. And then I will get with you.
Thank you. Great. Excellent. With that, with no further business on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Spiro. It's a non-roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll post. Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned at 7:06 PM.